Accomplishment. So I'm just here as a representative, both of uh. Myself personally. My feelings about what would be done best for the town. Quality of life. You saw how much people resorted to going outside during the covid. Uh, both in Wavine and on our properties. I mean, we don't unfortunately have a. Way of monitoring the precise numbers, but uh. It was a major increase. And uh. So I guess every cloud has a silver lining. But in any case, those are the two things I'd like um. To ask for your consideration on today.
Thank you, Arthur. Anyone else? Right, anybody uh from Zuma Land? Okay. We're gonna have a presentation from. Chris Shipper, the Conservation Commission Chair on this item. Later on. That brings us then to our introduction of our interns. We have um. How many in total? Have the other two arrived? Not a good thing. Anyway, so we have um. Why don't you all stand? And introduce yourselves rather than me trying to just read your names. And and if you would say where you know what what department you're gonna be working with, so. Are you start down here front? Very good. Michael, is this yours? Your intern? If you would introduce her. Very good, okay. Well, thank you all for joining us and we won't mention the names of those who didn't show up on time. But anyway, I. We're gonna have a little session after this meeting um with our staff and uh. Welcome uh and congratulations on your final weeks of. New Canaan High School and um. Any anyone else?
I suppose make comments about our interest ourselves before meeting, so welcome. Have a great time and we do have a raised hand.
Horrific.
Very good, very good. How many total interns are there at high school like? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, this has become an amazing program, uh so. Wish you well for the summer and we'll talk to you soon. So getting back to our agenda, um. Police vehicles, I think that's why the chief. And the deputy chief for here. Good morning, John and Andrew. This is Chief. John. Di Federico. Deputy Chief. Andrew Walsh. Go ahead.
Good morning, we're uh requesting permission to purchase two Ford police interceptors from Task of Ford. The price per vehicle is forty three thousand five hundred and. Five hundred eighty seven dollars and eighty eight cents. Uh, purchase is made from existing twenty twenty three capital. Um, dealer we've been using in the past, good service, obviously, there's long delays from Ford, so we had to put the reserve in ahead of time. But under no obligation, so just respecting.
Any questions, Bert?
You noted that I think in the original budget we had for three new vehicles and so as we have we just pushed that off to the next budget season?
Yes, there's a surplus of believe it was twenty thousand eight hundred twenty four dollars twenty four cents, which will be rolled into the uh purchase of the next uh.
It's six upcoming budget cycle, so six vehicles upcoming. This was this is two from the previous one.
Right, okay, yeah, great, thank you. That's all.
Done here.
I move we approve the request from the Canadian Police Department to enter into a contract with Task of Ford. To purchase two police vehicles as cost of forty three thousand five eighty seven eighty each. As described by Andrew. Second.
Second.
Further discussion? All favor?
Bye.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Thanks, guys.
Now the town clerk. Is Claudia Weber.
Hi, good morning. Um, I am here, um, originally I asked for a two thousand dollar increase. Uh, to purchase order two, two, three, zero, two, three, six to cover additional expenses for Atkins Printing. We have reached the ten thousand dollar limit and so anything over that we have to come and request. Permission and I actually would like to amend my request and now request four thousand dollars for Atkins Printing. We have the money, it's just gonna be coming from other accounts that we have a little bit of overage and we won't be using.
Could you describe briefly the ballot process now? Some of a a large majority of the ballot purchases will be made in the registrar's office now and not by. You for the.
Correct, we kind of ran over our Atkins but budget because we did. Request um. Over a hundred percent of poll ballots this year at the registrar's request and. We in previously, we've sort of guesstimated how much we really need, but since they ran out of ballots. You know. Once or twice, we wanted to err on the side of caution, so. Um, and we also, our paper supplies are really low and just. Just as an example, we um minute books, we need a couple of minute books, that's three um hundred ninety five dollars a minute book. Uh, vital records paper again, three hundred dollars, um vital binders, three hundred ninety dollars, so it adds up. We use specialized paper. Um, and we've been having trouble sourcing it as well.
Does this include, so have we increased the number of ballots and if so, by how much?
No, 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 we're not increasing ballots, um. We ran short. Because last year, we. Um, purchased more additional but more ballots than we had anticipated we were going to. So makes sense?
Not really.
No.
So so instead of in previously not to waste money because ballots can be expensive.
Yeah.
We would say, well, what's the turnout in a general election? What's the turnout in a presidential election? What's the turn? And we would guesstimate. We probably need about eighty percent or we need seventy percent.
Of the total electorate.
And this last time, we just said a hundred and ten percent, we're not gonna run out of anything.
Okay, this last time being for the last election or coming up?
The last election.
Last election.
But we ran out, I'm I'm confused.
Well, we're not gonna worry about us now because we're not in the next budget, but si- cycle, but I'm I'm saying that. Atkins Printing does our our prints our ballots and we spent more money previously with the last election, so we. Ran a little short. On what we need and also we are running short on paper right now, so. And supplies.
So is it, so we have ten thousand plus another four? And that's.
In the purchase order.
In the purchase order and that's just for supplies, it doesn't include ballots or.
Correct, correct, it's okay, mostly paper. Binders.
I see.
Our agenda item says to cover additional expenses of ballot printing, so.
Right.
Right, I brought up the ballots only because we probably could have made it had we not uh with the ten thousand dollars, had we not spent the extra money on on ballots to begin with.
You know, the state of Connecticut, there's sort of only a couple of printers that print the ballots.
Yeah.
And uh they cost like a buck a piece, so. But I I'm a little confused as to whether we're approving ballot. Printing or or paper.
So Atkins may find wrong, so. As part of our budget and we we bought a hundred and ten percent of what was needed for ballots for the last November. That ate into the budget you have for Atkins printed for all other items. You said minutes, books and so forth, okay. So you need that additional four thousand in this year's budget to cover this purchase order for Atkins.
Okay, so.
Okay. Now I get it, now I get it.
For fully gap.
I just wanna increase the purchaser, I'm not asking for any more money.
Right.
I had a little bit left over in advertising, we didn't spend all the advertising um. Budget this year, so it's a transfer.
Okay.
Is it a transfer, is it additional money?
It'd be it'd be a tran- if you're if you're increasing it's because you need to transfer from another line, but you've taken it out to backfill, you took it out to do for what you needed, now you've got to backfill your supplies because that's on low.
So so we has the board of finance transfer money because we we can't do a contract.
No, um, to put the PO in, you had to do it, so the tran- the money had to be there, such that the transfer's already been done for you to get the approval to go ahead with the. With the.
Was it for two thousand or four thousand?
I don't remember.
Yeah. Well, let's approve it on the basis of four thousand if.
The money's not there.
Yeah, exactly, okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, um. Any further?
Yeah.
I move we approve this request from the town clerk for four thousand dollars uh with uh with Atkins Printing for whatever it's for and. Subs- subjects the funds being available. Second.
Second here.
All in favor?
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia.
Thanks, Claudia.
Okay. Now we have. Mister uh Chris Shipper. Chris is the chairman of our Conservation Commission, are you gonna bring someone else? Great. Can we do this in like? Twelve minutes?
It's happening in time.
Okay. You you use that mic, don't touch that mic in front of you.
Don't touch this mic.
Touch that one.
Has a label on it, so.
Don't touch that, got it. Uh, thank you for putting us on the agenda, I'm here as Chair of the Conservation Commission, I'm Chris Shipper, I live at Eight Ferris Hill Road in an antique. Um, joining me uh are is Tom Cronin, President of the Land Trust and John Winter, Executive Director of the Land Trust. I am here officially in my capacity as Chair of the Conservation Commission to request from the Board of Selectmen a dispersment. From the land acquisition fund. Of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the. Purchase and preservation of a property. On Valley Road. Known as the group's house that is currently owned by the First Water Department or First Taxing District of Norwalk Water Department. Uh, that fund was created back in twenty seventeen and has, I think to date, uh uh achieved a hundred and fifty thousand in funding, so it is a full request. And to give you any further information about the property or really to dialogue with you about the property. I would ask that uh Tom Cronin and uh John Winter describe it.
Okay, let me just make a comment because we put this on um in anticipation of a formal request, which has to start with the Conservation Commission recommending to Selectmen, then to the Board of Finance, then to the Town Council. So uh since you're in negotiations on a purchase and sale agreement, would you'd like to know how much? Uh, you know, why don't you describe the total fund you need to raise to purchase the house and the additional property and the town would be contributing toward the additional one acre property? If we if we. Go forward with the request, so.
So we're thinking a minimum of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the. Uh, total campaign uh in in likely uh additional funding. Uh, to endow the endow the property. Um, for the future. Uh, little history behind uh the transaction, uh the first um. District Water Company purchased a four acres years ago and uh. Now through some negotiations are willing to um. Sell the group's house to the New Canaan Land Trust, we originally uh offered to buy the house. And the footprint underneath the house and some frontage. Uh, which would um link us to the Wildlife Preserve directly north of the property. To be honest, uh, the transaction amount was a little underwhelming that we offered to the first district. Uh, so they asked for uh additional money and we said um. That was possible if they were able to. Provide additional acreage beyond the footprint of the house. So they did offer an additional acre with the transaction. Of course, that's we're gonna require additional funds for the land trust. So right now we're in negotiation, we have a few contingencies. As far as um. Managing the final sale, they're very minor, uh gates, fencing, et cetera. And we're in the process of lining up the funding for the final transaction, which. It should take place sometime in September.
And your use of the house would be what?
Use the house would be for the. Headquarters of the Land Trust and for the residents of our Executive Director.
So let me just give you a little background, five years ago when the uh First Taxing District, after they acquired it and hied off. The property they needed next to the reservoir. To do their berm, they had put a demolition notice up and we fought the the demolition. And at the time, the utility, which is. Wasn't very friendly to the town or or to the city of Norwalk. Talked about selling the house and the property but couldn't come to terms. And then uh recently, last year, there was a change of management with the water company and they wanted to improve relations with the town. So this transaction is coming out of that effort to improve relations between the town. And the First Taxing District of Norwalk um. And the importance of the additional acreage is. The only possible purchaser in a four acre zone will be someone with contiguous property and the original proposal was to have a narrow strip of property connecting the two. To make it a legal transaction, but then that narrow strip wasn't gonna be very effective to make it part of the. Was the Brown Preserve is ten acre, ten ten and a half acres.
Seven point four, yes.
So that this this makes the transaction a lot more useful for the land trust to be able to connect to their ten and a half acres and. So that's the background.
Mm hmm.
Any further questions? Again, actually, the transaction is not being proposed right now, but in order for them to. Include and sign their purchase and sale agreement, they'd like to know. What kind of funding they may anticipate from the town.
We think we're within um a week or so signing that purchase and sale agreement, but again, we need to line up the funding.
So guys, this would clear out, clean out the. Balance of the acquisition fund.
That. That would be my observation, the fund was established in twenty seventeen by the Town Council. In the five years hence, it's only managed to accumulate a hundred and fifty thousand because of various ins and outs and because we haven't solved. A a consistent funding mechanism for it. Uh, that would take the fund down to zero, although there is now for twenty three, twenty four, the upcoming fiscal year, a hundred thousand dollar request. So it would put money back into the fund.
Which hasn't yet been approved by the Board of Finance.
Has yet to be approved by the Fornish, they're still looking at funding mechanisms.
And you're gonna talk to the Town Council tomorrow night about this subject.
We would probably end up, w- w- once we understand your position, we would then go forward to the Town Council tomorrow.
So I'm supportive of this, have been in the past, um question, timing. When would you anticipate coming back to this body for formal approval?
Well, we would like to get a preapproval because we're like anything, if you're about to sign a purchase and sale agreement, you wanna have your financing lined up. I would be uh remiss if I didn't say that we do have two. Uh, large supporters would uh get us most of the way there with your support, we believe we would have the funding stack to complete and sign the PNS.
Can. Can we, can we approve, can we approve the concept of the acquisition but not the PSA?
Yeah, I think we 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 need some further um detail before we can actually vote, but I think the sense that we wanna vote today that our sense is we will. Are in favor of this and obviously the Board of Finance and the Town Council have to approve it well, so.
Right.
So just thank you for this, um, I'm certainly supportive of it as well, just so I understand, so one would be hundred and fifty out of the current uh land acquisition fund. There is another hundred proposed to go in for the next budget, will that also be taken for this particular purchase? No.
No.
Okay, great, thank you. And so uh and did we say, have we said what the total is of the the house and the land is at seven fifty or?
So. So because we're we haven't signed, we're still in a quiet phase, our belief is that for the for the property and the preservation. The number will be seven hundred and fifty, so that the town contribution would be leveraged at four to one. So we would, we would get a hundred and fifty, but we would also then go out and raise six hundred.
Okay.
And then in addition to that, and that would simply be the the.
Just the acquisition.
Prudent approach when you, when you, when you look at this deal, it's basically a land acquisition deal with a house gifted. But it's a gift horse and we're looking it in the mouth because we know that you have to do preservation work on it.
I was gonna say, uh, so that's doesn't include any sort of restoration.
It does.
Oh, it does.
This number does, and and I'm I'm being a little vague uh on it because we haven't signed the PNS.
Understood.
We see the total amount at seven fifty and then above that, the land trust will launch a capital campaign to prepare an endowment fund.
I see, okay.
So.
Thanks for the clarity.
Yeah, your your number will be one fifth to one tenth of what's required. On this uh, on this property deal.
Mm hmm. And then just.
And I love the leverage of that.
Yeah, sure. Uh, I just noted in our portals here, th- this was a draft from twenty seventeen of the actual. Uh, open space land acquisition fund, was that was that completed or?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe we can just get the final copy of that, that'd be great. Thank you. That's all I have.
So the 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 motion here is actually just to uh express our intent to support this when it comes back to us, if you subject, if you conclude your negotiations.
Right.
Your purchase and sale agreement will be subject to. Town funding or or not necessarily because.
It is, it is not necessarily done, but we're being prudent, just like uh a a purchase and sale agreement. You you say, well, I think I'll have funding or financing, you would go into it with the belief that you'll have your funds available and we believe with your support, we would be able to go right ahead and do it.
Yeah, I'd also like to comment that, you know, we really appreciate the very cooperative attitude that we're getting from the First Taxing District. Um, they uh they service a number of uh. Of uh. New Canaan residents down Valley Road and and they take all our water and we don't get a lot back from them, but this is a very constructive. Transaction with the land trust to show goodwill to the town. Or the town of New Canaan and uh and we appreciate that.
Did you just remind us, is the strip of land that connects it to the Brown Preserve, which is also a great piece of property, is that a long valley or is it along the reservoir itself or is it?
It is, it is a long valley road.
It's a long valley, okay.
Kind of beauty of this uh whole thing is to be able to kind of reconnect.
Yeah.
The historic house with the land that was originally part of it.
Sure.
You know, in the in the in the nineteenth century.
Yeah.
So it's the strip kind of behind the house that marries the Brown Preserve behind it.
Got it, okay, thank you.
No further questions, I move we. We uh approve resolution to support this transaction um and subject to final negotiation of your purchase and sale agreement, it'll come back as a formal request. From the Conservation Commission to us to uh support the transaction with the land trust.
Is this just an approval or just a stating?
Well, again, I, you know, I think they they need the 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 anticipation that we're on board. Town Council is gonna hear a presentation tomorrow night and I think the Board of Finance was was supported last week.
Thank you for that.
So I I make that motion, second?
Second.
All favor, aye?
Do you wanna discuss potential funding mechanisms for the land acquisition fund today?
That's really more appropriate for the Town Council tomorrow night, I think you can watch the presentation made to the Board of Finance last week, but given our schedule today, we got a lot of.
I'm with you.
On the agenda.
We got, we got what we want.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you, Tom, okay. Now, Andrew, our town treasurer. Let me give you a little background here, last week, the Board of Finance. Andrew presented to the Board of Finance, um, because with all the concern about regional banks. We use Webster Bank as our primary operating bank and um there was concern, are we comfortable with uninsured deposits um? Most towns and cities have uninsured deposits because it's hard to fully collateralize all your uh. All your deposits with government securities as we do with Webster. Um, and this proposal is something that. The Board of Finance was recommending, but I think we have to independently decide whether it's something we we need or feel we we feel we should do, so go ahead, Andrew.
Sure, everyone.
Hi.
So uh, as I, you know, as Kevin just um introduced the idea, I came to the Board of Finance last week.
Andrew, could you speak to?
Oh.
Could you speak to that, Mike? Better reception, thank you.
All right, um, so essentially, uh, what we were looking at is the state of the banking. Um, sector and we just had another bank failure earlier this month and we happen to do a lot of our banking with. A bank that's in that same kind of class, except the main difference is Webster has a more secure deposit base. Um, a different deposit base, they don't have venture capital, uh cryptocurrency types of companies banking with them that can withdraw all their money, you know, in a moment's notice. Um. It's really.
Digital banking, they don't have digital, do they have digital banking where you can just press something on your phone and your money comes out or? That that happened.
I mean, I believe they have online banking.
Okay.
You know, but you know, but again, the the deposit base that banks there is not the type that.
Okay.
You know, where there's a high risk of flight. Um, and you know, like a bank run type of scenario. Um, which is good, but with that said, one, I guess, part of my agenda has been safety of our cash. And securing the money that we have in the bank. And while most, the vast majority of the money is sitting in fully collateralized accounts at Webster, all of the money is sitting in our money market, that's when. Our tax collections come in, we put them in there, they earn, you know, a decent rate of interest, we've been able to negotiate with them as rates have gone up over the past year, which has been great for the town. Um, but the money sitting in our checking accounts is only collateralized at the ten percent level that the state of Connecticut requires. And the bank, you know, does not give us additional collateralization above and beyond the state's um uh setting uh for the checking accounts. And we have to keep money in our checking accounts at all times because we still pay some vendors in, you know, via check. They don't necessarily deposit the check right away, so you need the funds available in the account that you're issuing the check from. Um, and so we generally never go over ten million dollars, um, and so my proposal is we go out and get a letter of credit. Um, to collateralize those balances, those are the only balances that are not fully collateralized to date. Um, because all of our other general funds, they're, you know, invested in treasuries, which are backed by the full faith and credit of the federal government, so long as. Uh, the debt ceiling uh negotiations uh go well um later this month. Uh, but we also have money, um, well, we had a lot of money through the Intrify program, that's a network of two thousand. Uh, banks around the country that are all FDIC member banks and they. Put our cash in two hundred and fifty thousand dollar or less increments at other network banks. Um, and so all those funds were fully FDIC insured, so really this is just for the approximately ten million or less that sits at Webster. In the checking accounts that are not a hundred percent collateralized, they're only ten percent collateralized, so this letter of credit would allow us to achieve full collateralization. Especially as we head into, you know, like at the end of the fiscal year, um, when our auditors look at our accounts as of June thirty, you know, twenty twenty three. That full, you know, collateralized a level will be reflected in our audited financials and we, we already are, I think, among the lowest in the state in terms of. Uncollateralized funds. And this will just help us achieve that even more. And ensure that we can sleep well at night, knowing that no matter what happens to Webster, our cash is safe. Um, and so it's twelve thousand five hundred dollars for ten million dollars um letter of credit. The way it works is Webster would go out on behalf of us as their customer to the Federal Home Loan Bank of Boston. There, they would then issue us the letter of credit, um, we pay for it. I did look into whether Webster would pay for it for us, um, you know, out of, you know, our earnings credits that we get, because we get earnings. Earnings credits as well as interest on our deposits, um, but they said that this type of service is not one that they do. Um, generally, we're the only municipality that is requesting this, again. And that, I don't think that means that we shouldn't do it, um, I think we're trying to go above and beyond. Um, but what that means is we would need a special appropriation for the twelve thousand five hundred and then it's renewable each year, so that lasts for twelve months. And then you're subject to another twelve thousand five hundred to have another ten million dollar.
The price is locked down.
The price would be locked in.
For ten years?
For ten, ten, ten million, actually, it's not a year. For for ten million.
Ten million for how many years?
Well, it's it's one year and and it's and it's renewable each year.
At the same price point.
You don't know. You don't know.
You don't know, actually, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So A- Anne is our CFO and Sean, I don't know if you came for this discussion, but you have money on deposit with Webster as well from the Board of Ed, which. Um, so so if you wanna join us, you know, this discussion really involves how comfortable do we feel with Webster Bank, personally, I feel very comfortable with Webster Webster Bank. Uh, the state of Connecticut Banking Department um has expressed confidence in both uh M and T Bank and Webster Bank as. As two primary banks that hold funds for Connecticut municipalities. So I I mean personally. I don't find. Strong need for this letter of credit. Um, I'm also concerned, M and T happened to be over here last week and they said they provide the letters of credit without cost to their customers when when we questioned, so.
Um. Like, do we know what interest rate they pay on deposits?
Well, that's always, that's always the trade off, you know, if if they're giving you a credit enhancer, they may not be willing to. Give it, although we do get very low interest rates on these operating checking accounts compared to our money market balances.
Right, the the checking account gets, I think, one point seven five percent interest, whereas the money market's over four point, you know, like four point one percent.
So you have a good sense of credit?
Do I? Thank you. Uh, uh, it just cur- curious, so the ten million in just in the cash accounts. Uh, how low does it ever get?
Um, I'm trying to get it down, so it's about five million. On a, on a regular basis, so we crack it every day.
Okay.
Um, we've set up of all our other accounts, have set them up as ZBAs. So that we don't keep those reserves in those funds because there's still governmental funds other than sewer and grants. So we funnel all that back into the general fund and then from there, those excess have been either put into the money market or invested.
Yeah.
So at most, we're trying to get to five million because that's the feeder.
Okay, that makes more sense to me, ten seems high. You know, or earning, you know, lower rates of interest and having to pay and being uncollateralized and so forth, so that makes sense, does that include the Board of Ed? Or do they have a separate amount?
The ones on our side, so the Board of Ed side, we have um. The uh, we hold the fund for the Internal Service Fund.
Mm hmm.
And the AP and payroll. So Board of Ed would have then their grants. So Board of Ed would have then their grants and their activity funds and lunch fund, things like that.
And that's also uncollateralized?
I, I don't see that, so I don't know what level on the, that funds are.
We don't know. It seems like if this was going to be something that we would consider, you want to consider all the.
As a group, yes.
Right, well, and, and.
It does in the audit, you're right, it does in the audit, so.
The, the good news is the way the letter of credit works, we have discretion on which accounts to apply it to, we can apply to any. Funds in any accounts that we choose, so long as they're at Webster Bank. It only, because Webster Bank would be the one going out to get it. So so long as we have funds at Webster Bank, we can then decide which accounts it applies to, so we could easily, you know.
Cover.
Cover.
I, I suspect those, those accounts may be in the name of the Board of Education. As a separate legal entity, which as opposed to the county in New Canaan, so we are sure that we're going to cover everything we, we would like to cover. But I still, you know, the question is, do we feel we, we should do this, so.
And we can go at any level, we could do a 5 million, in essentially the, the, the cost is proportional to the amount, so it's not going to change, I think it's. You know, it's gonna, it would just be half, you know.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, number one, I think. Let's know what our entire exposure is in terms of uncollateralized cash, be it from the town or the Board of Ed, just that would be helpful. If these letter of credits are, you know, how much would they be for the total amount? Do we have too much cash in our accounts? I think it should be lower. And, and again, I don't, I can't speak to what the Board of Ed looks like. I also share the first selectmen's feeling, I, I think it's a little belts and suspenders. Here, but it's, it's a fairly small amount and it could be smaller if you just kept your cash balances lower. And reduce the risk overall, so that would be my thought.
It so happens that I'm going to be moderating next week in Miami. Symposium on bank failures, so I've been doing all the research here, you know, while, while Webster doesn't. Fit the profile of SVB or Signature or something else. You never know, so I, I agree with Kathleen, I think it is belt and suspenders query, whether in this environment, when nobody knows what's going to happen tomorrow, you brought up. You know, the debt crisis, we don't know where that's going. So while it is belt and suspenders at the right price. And if you get the federal home loan administration involved and you can get, get cheap. LOCs there are cheaper LOCs, it's, it's not a bad idea, it's something I would.
I would only say for one year if you did, and at, at a much lower.
I, I suspect there's a market here, for example, Berkshire Hathaway probably plays in this market, letters of credit can be written by anybody.
Right.
And I think this is largely about pricing and sacrificing interest in order to get belts and suspenders, so. Why don't we, why don't we actually defer action on this for two weeks and you do some more research as to whether or not we, we perhaps, because you haven't completed your paperwork.
Well, so I forwarded along, I don't know if you shared it with the rest of the board. The sample, I guess, letter of credit that Webster has previously obtained, I believe for a different client, they blacked out. The, the name of the other client, but they sent a template over of what it would look like. Essentially though, they would issue us an, I guess, the agreement, once we've, once we agree to go forward, we would then get that. We wouldn't get it in advance. Because it would be Webster getting, you know, doing the agreement with the Federal Home Loan Bank of Boston on our behalf, we're, we're just the beneficiaries. But yeah, I mean, and I, I'd said to Tucker when we met last week that I was still doing additional research on this. I think that's why it's on as a discussion today versus a full vote, because I think we do need more time and I think it. Makes sense, you know, I've been coordinating with the Board of Ed on, you have some of their accounts. Got them some extra interest as well and some of their accounts, so, so I think it makes total sense to, to collaborate with them and really understand how much do we need? Before we go out and say, okay, this is the amount we would want covered.
We also checked with some of our neighboring towns and they have tens of millions of dollars that are uninsured, so not that we want to be nervous nellies here, but we, we really need to. Focus on what we're trying to accomplish and whether the, we, we have the most competitive. Bank because it serves me, the M and T would give it to, to their customers without cost and. So.
Just on a, on a, the, keeping the reserve in the, the checking account, we rolled out ACH payments. So we have more and more vendors getting on top of that, so as many as we can get out, which means I can control the cash more on that float, which means I can keep the balances lower in the checking account. And manage that more minute.
So why don't we, you do some more homework in the next two weeks, we perhaps can, I'm not sure, we, we don't need a special appropriation, we can, we can find the funds for this. We just really have to decide, do we want to do it? At what, at what level, maybe we do $5 million rather than $10 million, if you.
Yeah.
Can manage.
Thank you.
I figured it was worth bringing up, given the headlines and the news, just wanting to be extra vigilant, thank you.
No, we, we, we do appreciate that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, busy agenda here and. Let's turn to John Howe from Recreation, Parks and Recreation.
Good morning.
Thanks.
So the, the two items, the paddle tennis clinics, we had more people sign up for clinics and that's why. We're requesting 9,600 more dollars to pay Claire Norton, who is our head. Paddle instructor for these clinics. So.
Any question?
None here.
She, she also shows up on the 10,000 and less contracts, is that? For the paddle clinic, is that something separate? This is, if I'm reading it right, Claire Norton?
Yeah, why is this, this is under 10,000, why is it on the agenda?
It goes over the, it goes over the limit since we had prior approval.
Okay. So the one that's listed for 3,512 for Claire Norton. This is on top of that, is what you're saying.
That should be part of this to finish this out, this will finish this out for the spring season.
Okay.
The 9,600. Without, not exactly positive, what's, what you're seeing for the 3,400?
It's a list of contracts, Claire Norton Platform Tennis Professional Recreation Department Paddle Clinic, 3,512.
Right, that could be already in the, the money we have left, left, left in our previous approval, our blanket order approval.
And keeps track of all this, so.
We're going to have the departments to use the vendor for the full year.
Yeah.
So we're going to ask all the departments to look at their vendors for the full year.
Yeah.
So if their vendor at some point went over. Put in the PO in July, when they come in front of you in July, do the whole thing then, so it doesn't hold them up during the year and they get what they need, they can always lower it, but just to make sure they have that approval in place.
Sounds good.
Okay, I move this request from the Rec Department to increase a previously approved purchase order in the amount of $9,600 with Claire Norton to accommodate increased participation in paddle tennis clinics, second.
Second.
Further discussion?
Hi, hi, thank you.
It's unanimous.
Okay. Pembroke Pumping, they're the company that takes care of our porta potties, athletic fields, different places throughout town. One thing that's happened is we've now started having some handicapped accessible porta potties, unfortunately, they're more expensive and that's why we need to increase. That contract by $4,500 to cover us through the end of June.
Any questions about porta potties?
Shouldn't that be in the contracts?
I have no idea.
Okay. Sounds good.
We're being asked to approve it.
Okay.
I move approve this request from the parks. Actually, this is actually recreation or parks?
It's truly recreation, I can see on the first one, I left out parks.
Enter into a precious, previously approved, preciously, previously approved contract is as preciously. With Pembroke Pumping in the amount of $4,500 for providing portable toilets as well as cleaning services, second.
Second.
No further discussion, all favor, I.
Thank you.
Get out of here, Jen. Who's next? Tiger, Tiger's got a few items here. Mr. Man, good morning.
Morning.
Tiger's the head of our Public Works Department. Very important part of our town government.
So one of my, one of my interns showed up as well, Sebastian is in the back, right there. So he'll be joining us and he actually is kind of doing a dual internship, he's being, he's spending time with Public Works and he's spending time with the Nature Center, so we're splitting time about half and half. With Sebastian, so the, the first item is. A request for a contract with Peter Lonnie Incorporated for sidewalks on Heritage Hill Road, it's actually three. Mid-block crosswalks that came in as a residential request. For the residents on both sides of the street from kind of trying to cross the street here to show and then also. At school bus pickup time, school bus picks up on one side of the street versus the other. Went to the police commission, the police commission approved the three crossings. We had them laid out and striped and then at that point in time had to come in and put in the additional curb ramps, so. I went to four vendors, I went to three previous vendors that we had been working with, Peter Lonnie Incorporated. Oman Landscaping, who does all the restoration work for EverSource, both sidewalks and, and landscaping and then Star Construction. And then we had a contractor who worked for us in the past, Sound Construction. His contact information was outdated, I actually spent an hour Googling him on, on the internet, found him on LinkedIn, gave him a, gave him a call. You know, sent him a note and then he came back. So he was able to bid as well, Oman and Sound, both, excuse me, Oman and Star said that they were too busy. So the bids came in, Peter Lonnie was the low bid at 18,625, I should note that $10,000 of that is for police protection, I threw that in because I didn't know exactly. Who was going to win the bid and what their duration would be as far as how long it would take for, for the work, I estimated it only be about three to four days, but Peter Lonnie came in at 18,625, Sound came in at 24,400. So I added a contingency of 15% onto Peter's contract, but only for the work for Peter, so the 8625 at 15% comes to $1,300 for a total of 19,925. And the funds are currently available.
Whoa, Tiger, is this ADA compliant?
It will be compliant, yeah, but it's, it's, yes, exactly, you know, we have a crosswalk, now we've, we, we had the request for the crosswalk. I wanted to stripe it to make sure we, we had it laid out correctly, once I striped it, then I build the ramp, I don't want to build the ramp and then find out there was a reason.
I don't want to go down the ADA rabbit hole, but we've got others, other places where we need to. We have other ramps. Be a ramp as opposed to a hard curb.
We have some areas that, that the ramps are deficient that we're working on as well, this would be the best way to describe that.
Good.
Tiger, just Peter Lanny, he's the one who mostly do sidewalks with or, okay, so I appreciate the process that you've taken us through. In terms of number of bidders and so forth, and that just sort of reinforces that you, you have worked with someone who has been. I think, you know, great in terms of his bidding, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Although I just want to clarify, did you just say that we're going to pay $10,000?
We're not, no, I just had that in as an allowance. I had that in as an allowance, so no, it'll, it'll be about three to four days worth of work, might not even need an officer, will need a flagger. So even if it had an officer at $500 a day for three days, it's 1,500 to $2,000.
So is the contract with Lanny for 80, 8,625?
18,625, but the 8625 is the only, is the portion for Lonnie itself, the allowance actually is between us and the police department. It's slated, it sits in the, sits in the account and then we'll just, we'll, we'll. Zero it out afterwards, but we, the way it works is Lonnie will hire the, hire the. Either the police officer or the flagger, the police officer bills us directly and it's an account transfer at, at finance or the flagging company bills us directly and we pay out of the allowance.
But maybe this should say Peter Lanny, 8,625.
It can, yeah, that's why I only did the contingency at, at 15%, but I, I wanted to keep the bid documents the same as the, as the contract itself.
But we have to authorize the spending of the.
Then authorize 9925.
I think that makes that more sense, just sure.
I was going to write it that way, but since the bid documents were written differently, I, I wanted to be, you know.
The bid document doesn't have the 10,000 actually going to Lanny.
Correct.
Lanny to the police department, it's.
Correct.
Right, it's really two kind of separate contracts, if you will.
Correct.
Right, okay.
And also, when, I mean, on town projects, when we're paying, we pay a different rate than utilities and.
You pay $7 less an hour for police protection. Flaggers is totally separate.
Okay, so. We're authorizing 18,625 of which Peter Lanny is 8,625.
Correct.
I move that. We approve that request for this agenda item, second.
So the total will actually be 9,000.
9,925.
Take, look at the, oh, sorry, here, look at this. So Lanny is really 8,625 plus the 1,300 contingency for a total for Peter Lanny, Inc. of 9,925.
We have to authorize the expenditure also of the.
And then separately, and then separately up to 10.
Up to $10,000 for police protection. We are, we are authorizing the full amount, it's just a. The breakdown.
Yeah.
We can, we can properly describe this in the minutes, but I think we need to. We need to understand that we're actually author, authorizing. The gross expenditure.
Yep.
For the discussion. All favor, I.
Thank you. This next is a, is a. Approval of a contract with AJ Penna Construction, we had them come out on an emergency basis to raise some manholes for us. On Route 123 and Brushy Ridge. They were working with the DOT or for the DOT, the DOT had come in and, and. Overlay the street, build and overlay the street and at that point in time, all the utility adjustments are the responsibility of the, either the municipality. Or the utility, so they were already working on the street, raising manholes for EverSource and Frontier. It was in our best interest to have them come and do the work for us, especially considering that we needed to raise these manholes to give access to a local developer who was. Had an application in front of P and Z and the WPCA and we were requiring them to do some. TV and some flow monitoring of our sanitary sewer system, but they needed access through the manhole covers. So we asked Penna to come in and do the work, Penna's original price came back at 12,63384. I felt that that was too high, so I went back to Penna and said. I needed to, we needed to look at the, look at the pricing that they had. They took $2,800 off, 283384 off for a total of $9,800. But given the fact that the invoices came in, since it was on an emergency basis at 12,63384. We have to apply the invoice first before we can apply the credit, so therefore the Board of Selectmen have to approve it since it's a contract over $10,000, but we'll only be paying less than $10,000.
Who's paying for this?
This to town is, I have monies available for.
This is for our sewer manhole coverage.
This is sewer manhole cover, right, as, you know, we have to have access.
Did you mention we're doing this in part because of the developer that's.
We had to do it, we had to do it.
Why wouldn't the developer pay for this?
Because we have, we have to have access ourselves, so it's got nothing to do with, it, it just happens to be that. They were one in the same. I wouldn't have the developer raise a manhole someplace else, so I am not going to have them do it here. It just so happens that the, the manholes in question, the area that was paid was in the exact same location that the, that the developer was looking to develop in. And the manholes needed to be raised, so it's, it's.
Is this for the Hill Street?
This is the Hill Street proposal, that's correct, right? Okay, but that was the reason why we also asked Penna to go out there on an emergency basis to have it raised and not go out and get quotes and come back, that was the more, the reason for the emergency.
Okay.
No further questions?
This one, so the, the, the timely required inspection and flow meter testing of the sanitary sewer flows. Is, is that on the town that?
No, that's on the.
It's on the developer.
Yeah, and they've already performed it, right, that's already been done.
It's already been done.
Yeah, the manholes were raised, they got in, they.
I see, this is retroactive.
This is retroactive, that's correct.
No further questions, I move we approve this request from Public Works and enter to a project with AJ Penna Construction in the amount 12,63384. For the raising of manhole covers as described by Tiger, second.
Second.
All favor, I.
Thank you. This next one is, is a. In conjunction with, we had received a neglected cemetery grant for $5,000. So we went out and asked. Three contractors to give us pricing for maintenance of our, of nine of the neglected cemeteries. We asked Rosati Landscaping, JMD Landscaping and Oman Landscaping. Only Rosati came back, even though I had follow-up conversations several with JMD and, and a couple with Oman. He came back at a price of $7,650, in essence, we're looking at a spring cleanup and a fall cleanup and then. Two summer mowing of the nine cemeteries, so each cemetery will be visited four times. With a spring cleanup, leaves, branches, what have you, and debris removal, same thing in the fall and then in the summer, just some summer mowing, that'll be. In kind of conjunction with our highway department does maintain some of these as well, so they'll be working through it as well, that's why we only have about. Four visits per cemetery.
Is this going to happen before Memorial Day when we put up?
Make sure we spruce them all up before Memorial Day, that's one of the, that's what the highway department makes sure of that, so. And as a matter of fact, the contractor's been asking to kind of get out there, so the overall price is $7,650 for the work. And as a matter of fact, the contractor has been asking to kind of get out there. So the overall price is seven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for the work. We have five thousand dollars towards a grant, but I thought since it was a grant, since you know, we had already come to you for a grant, you'd like to see the the overall response. So while it's under ten, I felt it was necessary to come back and show you what we were doing.
Tiger, do we do this every year?
We haven't done, we've been working with Rosati on a one off basis as far as they come in and help clean up this cemetery, clean that cemetery. All those contracts have been, you know, under under ten thousand dollars. So Kevin signed them. We've never had a a contract per se. The highway department's done the the majority of the of the maintenance on on some of the cemeteries, but we have an out of contract per se. This is an initiative that I'd like to see go forward. We have twenty seven separate cemeteries in town. The nine that are listed here are the ones that are basically accessible for the public. And that don't have a caregiver. So these are ones that don't have it. Some residents take care of the cemetery that's adjacent to them. A couple of cemeteries actually have. A grant, not a grant, but necessarily a fund that helps you an endowment that helps that takes care of that.
So we can rebrand this to no longer neglected cemetery maintenance?
I, I, yeah. It's the the grant is a neglected cemetery grant, right? Yes, it sounds terrible, but the I I would, it would be more on the side of just cemetery maintenance versus neglected cemetery maintenance going forward.
It's a good project.
Yeah. I move we approve the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Rosati Landscaping in the amount of seven six, seven thousand six fifty for the spring cleanup of the several cemeteries as described by Tiger. Second?
Second here.
All in favor?
Bye.
All right, thank you. This next one is for installation of railings at the Wavine House. ADA and building code compliant. Additional railing. We had, we had our our architect of the project, take a look at what was necessary. Gave us a nice rendition and went back to Alden Bailey who had performed the original work. To put in some additional railings. This was as part of our discussions with the with the DOJ. In certain situations, we actually had railing. They considered that we needed to have a little bit of an extension here or modification thereof. Some of the spindle spacing was at eight inches, they wanted it at four inches, so things of that nature. So I detailed out the the three separate locations, some at the west ramp to the patio. Some at the loge and some at the west porch, the existing railing on the western porch. Total for all the locations comes to thirty eight thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars. I put a ten percent contingency. Don't anticipate using any of it, but it's just in case we run into a problem for thirty nine hundred dollars for a total of forty two thousand six eighteen. And the funds are currently available for this work.
I just ask, was Alden Bailey the original? Folks that put in the these railings?
They put in the railings per the specification, yeah.
Per the specification.
For the, yeah.
And whose responsibility was that specification? In other words, these eight inch now have to be four inch, we.
That was a request by the by the by the architect from the DOJ. Wasn't wasn't required.
It was not required at the time they were installed.
It was a request, it's a request. And then there was, again, there was, they were looking for some wraparound ends and a and one interior railing. And the wraparound ends where it got into a discussion of. If you put the, if you do certain modifications to the railing, it becomes inside the based upon the layout of where the ramps are and the pedestrian ways are. They start to protrude into the pedestrian way. So. We didn't want to have that protrusion into the pedestrian way. And then during discussions, we were able to come up with what was a suitable alternative for not only, you know, to be compliant for the DOJ, but also. That it wouldn't necessarily be an impediment to someone else traveling on a on a subsequent access route. So was, you know, it was a little, it was it was long and involved, but I think we have a very nice solution.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I moved to approve this request from Public Works to enter to a contract with Alden Bailey Restoration in the amount of thirty eight thousand seven eighteen plus ten percent contingency as described by Tiger for the railings at Wavine House. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, Playhouse Theater project, we have how many items here?
For for a playhouse, we have two. For the PD move, we have three.
I should, we should emphasize this is kind of subject to spending this based upon the review that's being done by Hobbs Inc. We hired Hobbs Inc. You know, a couple.
Right, these, yeah, this this work. The first item is seventy five thousand dollars for Architectural Preservation Studios to help us. Get to finalize the construction documents and then the construction administration phase. We do have Hobbs Inc. working right now. Bill had a long meeting with them yesterday with our contractor. We had a kickoff meeting. Late last week with everyone involved in the project and then Hobbs will meet with Cinema Labs separately and then come back with their overall review. They'll be doing a third party review of the HVAC. So once they're done with their initial look, we'll have a we'll have a. A regrouping meeting with them and all the contractors and then he'll come with his final determination in the end as to whether or not. You know, there's other ways of to save some additional monies. But this this money's, this money is one to make architectural preservation studios whole and then to help us move forward. Assuming that 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 Hobbs comes back with the with a favorable answer. To then bring us to closure on the project. At least into finalize the construction document phase and then the construction administration services for once we start construction itself. So that the request is seventy five thousand dollars with a fifteen percent contingency of eleven thousand two fifty. They've been spending. An inordinate amount of time on this project. Thankfully, they've been doing a fantastic job and for a total of eighty six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and the funds are currently available.
Tiger, what was the original amount for this service?
It's two oh four, two oh four.
Two hundred four thousand, so this is an additional seventy five on top of that. The two hundred four was though for preservation studio?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, and.
I'm sorry, it's two oh four includes the engineers. Yeah, so Larry DeVito and the 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 structural engineers are are being paid for by.
Preservation.
Preservation.
Okay.
Studio.
Okay, I just want to get a sense first, you know, the magnitude of the increase. So and and that's because of the change order.
Is this, are these two? General items of amounts included in the.
Not in the four million.
Not in the, it's not in the four million. It's beyond the additional four million?
Right, so the monies we. The elevator is as well.
Oh, the elevator's coming out.
ARPA fund, that's correct. So it's out of the monies that we currently have. The art elevator's coming out of the ARPA funds and then this money's coming out of the funds we currently have. We're not dipping into the four million dollars that that we're waiting for. Hobbs to come back with that. And then at that point in time, we'll bring forward the contract for HVAC plumbing and and Alden Bailey at that point going forward. But we were waiting until they're done with their review before we before we actually start to utilize those funds. That was a request from the council that we that we agreed to.
Should be noted that. Cinema Lab owes twenty percent of these fees, which we've already worked out and. So that very transferred.
Cinema Lab is paying twenty percent of what the preservation studio is charging in total, including the change order. Okay.
No further questions? I move we approve this request from Public Works to approve a change order for Architectural Preservation Studio. In the total amount of eight six thousand two fifty, which includes a ten percent, twenty percent?
To fifteen.
Fifteen percent contingency to the additional architectural services for the Playhouse Theater renovation project as described by Tiger. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? No, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you. This next is the actual purchase of the elevator for the playhouse itself from Otis. They'll be doing the the purchase and the installation. It's a hundred and forty eight thousand dollars. We added a fifteen percent contingency of twenty two thousand two hundred for a total of a hundred and seventy thousand two hundred dollars. And the ARPA funds that were allocated to this project will be utilized for for this purchase. Bill met with with our attorney. And it fits with the with the requirements from the the bidding requirements from the ARPA funds, so.
Is the bidding, is is the amount on this, has this been augmented by? The recent travails at the playhouse or was this the original number?
It's actually better than what the original.
Good. How much better?
It's a hundred and eighty, hundred, two hundred?
It's a little over a hundred, better. There's a crossover there, right? So we're just actually buying the equipment and they're installing it. All the Bailey will have, still have their work to do. But overall, I think it's because we don't have to cover the bonds and all of the other things that are associated when you have the general contract. So I'm thinking about a hundred.
Does that go back into the ARPA pool then?
Which, no, no, this, no. The point is, this is for the the cab and the mechanics, the the infrastructure to build the elevator frame and everything is on Alden Bailey, so.
Yeah, this is just our. Little. Let's see, we're challenging, maybe we'll try, you have to decide to talk to the attorney on how to use it properly so that we can make sure we pass our law. This meets criteria and a couple of items to to which I'll bring.
Okay.
Other questions? I move we approve the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Otis Elevator Company in the amount of hundred seven, well, actually a hundred forty eight thousand dollars. Plus an additional contingency for the purchase installation of elevator at the Playhouse Theater. Second?
Second here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So this next is to move the office furniture.
That's why Sean's here. I'm just trying to think, why, why are you here?
The next, the next two items, right, the next, the next two items were, that's why we asked Sean to to come and join us. The.
Want to join us?
More than welcome.
Sean is the CFO of the Board of Education. The new CFO, relatively new CFO of Education, welcome.
Well, it's all together.
Don't touch that particular mic.
Even though it says do not touch it, but yeah, so this is for actually relocating the offices and the program furniture and equipment from thirty nine Locust to two twenty Elm. And it's sort of tied in with item number eighteen, which is a temporary police department. Because in that essence, we'll be working towards bringing the police department over to thirty nine Locust. So when Joe comes up, the item number eighteen is is commensurate with this. But this is for Castor to come in, take the take the existing furniture that we want to utilize at two twenty from thirty nine and bring it over. The cost is twenty three thousand eighty one dollars and ten cents. We had a ten percent contingency of two thousand three hundred and eight dollars and ten cents for a total of twenty five, three ninety eight, twenty. And the funds for their for this are currently available.
So my question is, with respect to to sixteen and seventeen and look, at the end of the day, it's taxpayers' money, but who's. What accounts are these coming out of Board of Ed accounts?
Right, so the sixteen and seventeen are coming out of the project for two twenty, two twenty Elm.
For Capex?
Project, yeah. There is some additional furnitures, furniture and and pertinences that the BOE will be purchasing themselves.
I mean, when we redo a roof at East School. Again, it's town, it's taxpayer money, but it comes out of the Port of Ed.
Right, this, the these two are coming out of the project since they're both project related. And then any additional furnishings and things of that nature that the BOE would like in their new space will be coming out of their out of their funds.
And is this the end of? Kind of requests, funding requests, or do we anticipate other six figures? Good, the answer is no, Bill.
This is, this is an expenditure, this isn't a funding request.
Oh, okay, we're spending money. My question is, you know, we we just talked about the playhouse and, you know, now we're moving to two twenty Elm. I just want to make sure that. There's no one known unknowns out there.
The point is, the initial transaction was assumed that we were only going to renovate the.
Right.
Whatever is each eastern side, western side of the building for the.
Western.
Launch program and the alternative. Right, education programs. And then the superintendent decided he really wanted to demolish the entire office space, which. Increase increased the cost, but we're also, we're also getting a home for the Board of Ed for the next fifty years. In the in the building the town owns, first floor of, so it's a it's a different plan than what he originally. Recommended and funded, but but it's. It's turning out to be a, it'll be a very nice project, maximizing the use of the space. We had to move some things around to accommodate it, but it's all being done.
Welcome to the other, so we're still on schedule for the end of July completion and relocation.
Look, I'm I'm in, I was in favor of this deal. I think monetizing the the lease, the long term lease was a good idea for the town. I just wanted to understand, you know, what what's the overrun? What what do we, what was sold to us, sold to the town and, you know, what's the overrun? Through these changes that it sounds like the superintendent has been supporting.
Again, the the the.
You don't have a number?
The original plan. The original plan was to do half of the building and live in it for a while and the better plan is to renovate it for the future with one, one transaction.
Yeah, and I'm just asking how much that's going to cost.
The work, we've already asked for all the monies that were necessary.
So how much do those add up to?
It was one point five million dollars was totals. It was a seven hundred thousand dollars in the original allocation for the purchase of two twenty Elm. To Kevin's point, it was that felt that we were going to take care of the two educational aspects and then. Live in the area and then come back and renovate later. The superintendent, and I I agree with him, wanted to have his people move once and be disturbed disrupted once. So do the renovation now and then move in and be done. So you would probably would have been looking at. Two separate allocations totaling one point five million or more. We went for one allocation of one point five million, so.
And what was the time, remind me of the timing between the two, what would have been the two allocations, Tiger? Would that have been a year, two years, five years?
That's up to the superintendent.
Right.
You know, that's 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 his means and methods in his operations. I I agree with the fact that he wanted to disrupt his people once and move into a new space. We didn't ask the people in the town hall to come here and sit in their office and then leave and then get renovated and come back. So the it just happens that. We had, we had anticipated one type of of renovation and and he want, he was looking at a second, a different type. I I think that we save money in the end by combining it all into one and doing the project in one total allotment. Granted, it was a different amount than was originally budgeted, but I think that overall we're going to save money versus doing some now and then some later.
The seven hundred thousand dollars was the number that I think Joe generated based upon what our understanding was and the superintendent was on board with that proposal. So again, it changed subsequently.
Do you want to vote?
Aye. I move we approve this request from Public Works to enter to a cat, Castor moving in the amount of twenty three thousand eighty one ten plus its contingency. For the relocation of offices and program furniture equipment from thirty nine Locust to two twenty Elm. Second?
Second.
For the discussion. I, all in favor? Aye.
Bye.
And this next item is with Stanford Office Furniture for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's on a state contract. To purchase the additional office furniture and refiling system for the BOE for their new space. So while they're taking some of the furniture over, there's some. Other furniture that will be necessary to build and buy for the for the new space that some of the furniture doesn't doesn't match or doesn't. Work in the new spaces that are being allocated and constructed. These funds are currently available inside the project as well.
Questions? I move we approve the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Stanford Office Furniture in the amount of a hundred fifty thousand dollars for the purchase and installation of office furniture filing system for the Board of Education offices. Second?
Second here.
All in favor? Aye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Good to see you.
Go on, Joe.
Okay.
Tiger and Joe, thank you, Bill.
Talk to this one?
Yeah, make the entrance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this will be pretty easy, the temporary police department furniture planning. Stanford Office Furniture. Is going to create plans for the temporary police department at thirty nine Locust. The good news about the Board of Education leaving some of their, they're leaving a lot of their furniture behind where it comes to, you know, desks. So we're gonna, the police department has been very frugal about, we're gonna.
Are they, are they going to get money for that, the desks? Excuse me, you said they're leaving behind in the old space?
They're gonna leave, they're gonna leave the. The actual furniture for the police department to utilize for the next eighteen months to two years.
And then we'll take it with us when we vacate to the new PD or.
No, at that point, at that point, it will either be left in place or it'll be have to be, you know, recycled or repurposed.
Okay.
So the good news about them, them leaving it, really where you save a lot of money is, you know. The data drops, the electricity is everything's already there in in place, so they're willing to be able to utilize that. And one of the services they're going to provide is they're going to be the kind of the the basket that collects all the furniture and puts it on a. And puts it on a plan. So we have furniture that's being left behind. We have furniture over at the existing PD that some of it may be moved. We have specialty furniture, specialty items for the, you know, the police doing police business. So they're really kind of the they're gonna gather all that and put it on a plan. This does not include any little infill pieces of furniture that that we may need. That I'll come back for for additional authorization for. This is really the professional services. And the fundings, the funding for this is available. Under the 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 temporary move line item of the police department.
Joe, can you just remind us? Thank you for this. Thirty nine Locust, will that accommodate everybody who's in the police station now? Okay, so that's.
Yeah, that was one of the another nice thing is the police department. There's. One point, they are gonna be dispersed to different locations, so everyone is gonna be under one house.
Okay. And just remind us, will it accommodate the parking spaces for all of the?
Yes.
Police vehicles?
Yes, so there's adequate parking. There's there's parking on site. There's there'll be five parking spaces in the street. There'll be ten overflow parking spaces at forty nine Locust, I believe. And then there's we also have the Locust lot so that so we have.
Okay.
Ample parking in this location. They're very, they're very happy with it and that's gone through planning and zoning already as well.
Thank you.
For the questions, I move approve this request from public works entered to a contract with Stanford Office Furniture in the amount of eleven thousand two eighty plus a contingency. The project entails the design, creation and furniture. Coordination plans for the temporary new can police department at thirty nine Locust, second.
Second.
All in favor, I. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Tigers tree warden.
So the last item for us today is. Treewarden went out to bid on his latest bid. We received three bids back. Mill River was the low at twenty one thousand one nineteen. This is for nine separate locations in town. The majority of the work is either at. West School or at Kiwanis Park in anticipation of the Y. Coming in for the summer. So we'd like to award the contract to Mill River. They've done nice work for us in the past for twenty one thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars.
Any questions? I move approve this request from the tree warden to enter into a contract, Mill River Tree Service in the amount of twenty one thousand one nineteen is described by Tiger, second. Second here, all in favor, I. Thank you, Tiger. Okay, we're gonna have a quick discussion about this commuter parking. Let me introduce it, Cheryl. I'm sorry, Tucker and Stacy. Two weeks from today, the branch line will shut down for the summer and probably through September. And we want to make sure we get the word out to our residents. They need to make plans for where they're gonna commute from, because they won't be commuting from either the new Canan. Station or the the Talmud Hill Station. We are working on a plan to communicate with all the commuters, not only New Canaan residents, but also those who commute from Westchester and other towns through our Wilton. Through our branch stations and. That will involve, we've been working to discover parking spaces in Darien. We've identified over five hundred spaces at the three. Locations of Darien Station. Talman Northern High Station and Stamford Station and we're working on trying to with boxcar. Boxcar currently has spaces at San Alawishus and Talmud Hill and they're interested in serving their customers. Who also will need to find parking or and we're also working on possibility to providing. Coach buses from Talmud Hill to Nuroton Heights rather than the Metro North will be providing free buses, but they're gonna be. Forty five minutes from the cane to Stamford and it's gonna be a very unattractive commute. Total commute time will be an hour forty five minutes to two hours. So. We are gonna meet with with the. First select woman and town administrator Darian to try to get their cooperation on some of this. Hopefully not to give us our residence tickets for the first two weeks, because they're gonna be finding places to park and. So that with that Tucker and Stacy and Greg Riley and. Bob Matili have all been working on this plan. We hope to come out with an email to all commuters by Thursday. And then next week we'll do some further distribution of plans too, so they can make their choices. I want to emphasize, people have to make plans to where they're gonna park. Or or plan on working remotely for that first week because it's gonna be kind of ugly, so. You wanna make any comments?
The only other thing that I would add is that we as part of the Parking Commission, we initiated a parking survey for all the current permit holders and. Just ask them what they anticipated their usage might being like. I mean, we understand that the remote world is still out there, although the lots we're seeing. We're seeing Mondays are starting to become more active. Fridays are definitely the the one real down day, Mondays and Fridays, but Mondays are getting busier is from what you're telling us. And yeah, the the as part of the survey, they told us they definitely would welcome any anything that we could do to alleviate some of this. We've been in touch with the Department of Rail. It's really what Metro North is providing is they're providing us one coach bus with a capacity of fifty four. And then they're gonna have a, they call it a a protect bus that will be at the ready in Stamford, gassed up and ready to go. If all of a sudden it's a nightmare, I mean, it just doesn't make any sense.
We try, we try to convince them to take peoples in the road.
Yeah.
Rather than Stanford, because once you start fighting Stanford traffic, it's 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 a mess, especially in the later trains. So this plan will come together, is coming together. Stacy, you wanna make any comments? I mean, we.
Other than the phone calls that. People that are coming into the office really just want to know what. You know, if we had any plans and basically I am telling them what Kevin has told you, we're working on different options. We're trying to get together where we can guide them to park. A lot of our permit holders, one of their main questions is if we are going to have to park and pay someplace else. What's happening with the permits? One of the proposals that I have made is that maybe we can extend the current permit year, which is set to expire August thirty first. For the amount of time that the branch line is shut down and then. Once the branch line opens up again and resumes, then we send out the renewals at a prorated cost. This is just a proposal. I think that might be the easiest thing to do for our permit holders. Because if they are going, go to Darien to pay, they have to pay to park unless we can figure something else out.
Yeah, there are monthly passes available in some lots in Darien and Stamford, their garages. And they're also. The good thing news is the state lots down there are are four dollars a day because that's kind of the standard rate for all the state lots throughout it. The towns for Metro North stations, but it's gonna be, again, people have to plan. Where they're gonna park and get get used to a new routine for the summer.
And we're really the the only town that's really significantly impacted. I mean, Glenbrook and Crandale, they'll be able to get themselves to Stanford and that kind of thing, but. We're just trying to ask the DOT to give us any help they can, but we're.
I mean, is is the only person I think in government, New Canaan is a commuter. I just see this being. What you referred to.
Ugly.
Ugly and even worse.
Necessary thing is the branch line will.
Yeah.
The improvements are necessary, but.
I agree, and you gotta do it. What I think is gonna happen, guys, is that. Commuter is gonna just wake up one morning and say, oh, geez, the line shut down.
Yeah, and that's exactly why.
And then they're gonna rush to Darien to one of the pay lots, the daily pay lots. And, you know, and then then from there, they'll start to probably educate themselves. But I think it's great that you guys are on top of this. As a town and then we were trying out options and we look forward to the discussions with Darien. Because Darien could really come through for New Canaan. I don't know if I want to do that, but.
Well, the other hand, boxcars, boxcar is a great partner for us. You know, they run a hundred forty buses a day into Manhattan from New Jersey towns and.
Yeah, boxcar is great.
They have a hundred and twenty locations. They have parking dozens. I forget what the number is.
Well, we're hoping to, like Kevin said, at least be able to put something out there where we can guide people.
And when do you think that'll be, Stace? Because this week, okay.
We'll get it out there.
Our box. And beyond the permit holders, just the folks who go part time, I don't have a permit, but I commute. And so is that just gonna go out publicly in a press release or something? Yeah.
I I should emphasize, this is gonna be for the four peak trains in the morning. People beyond the peak trains in the morning and afternoon will have to take the Metro North buses.
Thirty in the morning, you can park in the Darien permit lots as a daily parker after nine thirty in the morning.
After nine thirty, okay, and that's gonna be in the press release or whatever. Including overnight parking?
Looked into overnight parking.
In Darien? It's dangerous.
No, out anywhere. Okay.
Okay, so that's that's discussion. Again, we're gonna have. Emails and collateral material out this this week and next week, so. All right, we gotta finish up this agenda. Probationary status, Cheryl.
Do we have a?
I have a ten o'clock.
Okay, we have three members to bring off probation. Two are with finance, Rose and Nancy. Rose is the staff accountant. She has acclimated well with staff, works well with the team, and I recommend that she come off probation. And Nancy, who is our AP supervisor, has a great personality, gets along well with staff and works well with department heads. And then the last one is Justin McNamara, who works for Parks. He's a groundsman too. He's a team player, fits in well and a hard worker, so I would recommend that we bring all three off of probation.
Any questions? They're all doing great jobs.
They are. I concur with Cheryl. My two, Rose and Nancy are great, great additions to finance.
That's great.
Okay, I move your group, their question, you have resources to. Remove Rose Adewini. Nancy Field and Justin McNamara from probationary status, second.
Second.
All in favor?
No, I, thank you.
Okay, then we have one appointment to the partial recreation commission. I've known Lindsay for many years, having served on the community foundation board with her. She's a fabulous volunteer and. Happy to recommend her to the Parks Recreation Commission for a three year term ending December one, two thousand twenty three, any. Do I have a second?
Second. Oh, sorry.
Hi, all in favor, hi, contracts, any questions about the contracts?
None here.
Uh, over payments, we got some two real estate and a couple automobile, few automobile. I move your proof the the refunds of tax over payments on our tablets. Second.
Second here.
All in favor, I. Legal fees, any questions about legal fees?
What do we do with the over budgeted item?
That's why we have a contingency or.
But how much of that? So.
Yeah, well, you know, all the hundred thousand dollars of overage is all related to eighty thirty Jeep approvals and and so it's.
I'm sorry. Hundred thousand is all related to.
Eight thirty Jeep.
Oh, eight thirty.
The three eighty thirty Jeep proposals, which we didn't anticipate when we budgeted last year, so.
Okay, so but what mechanically, how does this work?
Yeah, and we will underspend budget overall.
Entirely.
Entirely, so there's always funds available. That. That brings us to selectmen's comments.
You have to prove those. Legal fees.
I move approve the legal fees on the tablets, second.
Second.
All in favor, I. I have no particular comments. We will take up the utilities commission appointments in two weeks. I think we're making.
We actually, we don't have the meeting in two weeks. It's actually three.
Oh, yeah. Oh.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that Memorial Day, we don't have a. Oh, well, we're making good progress, right? You know, so I think I think we will have a full complement of the nine.
Yeah, we have a terrific.
Yeah.
Yeah, proposed team, so if we all, each of us could maybe go through Tucker or in or Steve Carl, then he'll help us.
Yeah, this is tricky.
That's why.
Normally, we don't appoint a whole board at the same time and trying to get, that's the beauty or the genius, I think, of the town committees.
Well, we did for the.
For the audit committee. That's because the top, the audit committee was a transferring responsibility from the town council to the to a new body, so.
Well, and the ethics. So, yeah.
Yeah, same thing.
Yeah.
We did the ethics board together.
Yeah.
As well as the audit committee, so.
Yeah.
All that aside, I just.
Anyway, so the key is to get this final group identified, approved, interviewed. And then. If we can do that by June the sixth, if not earlier, that'd be great and so that we could.
Those who I know, I don't need to interview, I mean.
Yeah, and then have the utilities commission actually launch, maybe it by mid. Mid June. So two two other things, if we can just follow up for next time, ARPA funds, I'd like to know what's remaining in in terms of funding. So maybe by June sixth and then and just following up on the the Gulf Station and what the plans are there. But we can do that for the next meeting.
That's my ten o'clock meeting.
That's your ten o'clock meeting, so please advise. Thank you.
Okay. I move adjourn second, ten oh two. Okay, thank you all. We're gonna stay stay with the intern for just a few minutes and.